...going to be ice forming on that concrete.
Okay. Mayor Johnson, even though you're not a member of this committee and your opinion doesn't mean anything, I will recognize you.
(laughing) Thank you.
No, just kidding. Go ahead, sir.
Holy cow.
I think you guys are struggling over this and you're making this a lot more difficult than it needs to be. Why don't you pass the UDO as is? Why don't you administratively, not change the ordinance, but administratively allow staff to authorize five test projects, residents three to 5% at their expense on their property, and we just see how it works. And then a year or two years down the road, if you want to change the ordinance, fine. If you don't, nobody else can do it.
So wait another year?
We don't have any expense. We don't have any liability. Just try it. It's a test at homeowner's expense.
Alderman, please.
A couple of things. Nobody should be putting salt on concrete. It's going to chip the concrete. That shouldn't be done, whether it's permeable or not. But the question is, on the variations, you know, John, you talk about variations coming through. I'm just curious, how many variations come through for additional lot coverage and how many have this, as the council passed over the years? Because people coming over, I think the first week I was on the council, somebody wanted a 2% increase. I remember that was my, one of my first votes. I voted against. The addition to the House actually looks very good. Maybe hindsight, I should have voted yes. The guy did a very nice job. There was a variation. How many of those variations have gone through that, and those were not, you know, impervious concrete, those were solid concrete?
I think there have been few variations that have come through. Part of the reason, I think, are, is because when people are rejected, we explain why they're rejected. They don't want to pay the fees involved with the variation. I think some of them go forward as a weekend warrior and do the work. We point out the alternative, that if they install a deck, that that's not considered lot coverage. Some people opt to put decks. But the problem that we have, particularly over on the west side of town, is that a lot of those lots, to the current zoning ordinance, are non-conforming. When they were developed in the late '60s and 1970s, they were developed to the point where they exceed the allowable coverage in the zoning ordinance, which wasn't enacted until 1976. And we've got one instance over there right now. We have an elderly woman who bought her duplex years ago. Now she's getting on in years. She needs a sidewalk to get from the rear of her house around to the front of the house, but because of the way, and there are no patios, there are no extra structures there, but because of the fact that it's non-conforming, when it was built, as far as today's standards go, we can't allow her to put a sidewalk around the back of her house and to get out to the front of her house. If we could allow a couple extra percentage using permeable pavers or some sort of product like that, she could put the sidewalk in. These are the kind of projects that initiated me to bring this forward. I mean, big picture, talking about doing alleys and streets with permeable stuff. I agree with Alderman Caddella. That's another discussion for another time, maybe stormwater management. But again, just to try and stay focused on my original intention, it's to help out those citizens that need to put in, you know, they need a little more lot coverage and they can't do it, and usually it's through no fault of their own.
Real quick, Mr. Forrest, the situation with somebody in a duplex who's already at or beyond lot coverage, isn't that addressed in the UDO because that new zoning district has a higher lot coverage ratio allowed?
I believe, yeah, it is. It's not quite as strict as our current one.
Right. Okay. I just, because I mean, I know of, I know of the one you're talking about and suspect that there may be others out there. So I don't, I don't want, what I want to do here tonight to, you know, put somebody like that out of business. So, Alderman Shawkey, I think you wanted to be addressed.
I agree with what you said, Alderman Caddella. I agree with the mayor, and I agree with John Forrest. And I would make a motion to do exactly as you said, but giving staff the opportunity to take up to 5% additional if the people are using permeable substances, whatever it may be, and let them work with it for, what, half a dozen people or a dozen people. So we've got test cases and we can come back with this in a year or two and know what we're talking about. So I'll make that a motion.
We don't necessarily need a motion at committee level, but I will entertain a second. Will anybody second this?
All right. Sorry, I was talking. I was asking the mayor if that's legal for us to just say the first five people in can do it, and he says administratively, you know, we're not picking and choosing. We're doing a test, basically.
I don't think a year is enough time to know if this is going to fail, and I don't know how many beyond those five could try to argue that they should be allowed to go their extra 5% over. I mean, as much as I agree with the mayor, from a purely administrative point of view, that, yeah, that's probably the way to go, the cleanest way to go, gives us the opportunity to study this. From, you know, from being a war to Alderman, I can't move forward with this. I just, I just can't. So while Alderman Shawkey, I think you've come to a good compromise, and I'll let the motion stand, and if there's a second, I will definitely call the roll. That's the only reason I have to vote no on it. So does anybody?
What's the motion?
Sorry. Dan, can you repeat it?
Sorry.
We can have the minute take or repeat. Your motion, plus what the mayor said.
So he says finish the UDO.
Leave the UVO as it is, and let staff use their common sense with whatever number they think what they'd like to do, perhaps different kinds of projects, maybe one sidewalk, one patio, whatever, and for the next year or two, until we see what we're doing with it.
Think the mayor has a suggestion on that?
Just to keep, just to keep this clean, why don't I suggest you do it in two phases? First phase, just to adopt the UDO as amended, and see if that passes. Then, not officially because you're not drafting an ordinance, but you're just giving staff direction to do five test cases in the town, not to exceed 5%.
I'll change my motion to approve the UDO.
I'll second.
Anything else on the question? Approve the UDO is what's on the floor.
As is.
As is. All right. I want to take a roll on this.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Repeat that motion again.
Approve the UDO.
To adopt the UDO as it is.
No.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes. Yes.
No recommendation.
Three to three. Does not pass. We still don't have direction for staff. Let's try it this way. Exclude the additional lot coverage through use of permeable surfaces from the UDO at this point. I do want to continue this discussion. I don't want to do it tonight. I don't want to hold up the UDO. So I guess the only motion on the floor right now is exclude this from the UDO. No, it's not. No, the motion that we just voted on was to keep the UDO the way it was, in which it's in there.
No, no, we never approved this.
The 5%.
So it wasn't in there?
It's not in the UDO.
No. Right.
The paperwork that you got with the cover memo from Ross Clicker, and this is per the discussion at the last committee meeting, is we revised the development standards in the UDO, and this page you have attached out of the UDO would be a revised page, and if you were to approve the additional 5% of the permeable coverage, we would go back and revise all of the development standards through the sections of the UDO to reflect the additional 5% through the use of permeable materials. This is just a sample for you to see what it would look like. So we have not revised the entire UDO. We were looking for more direction from council on that.
My apologies to everybody in the room. I get fuzzy after 50 minutes on the same subject. Alderman Police.
Actually, this, this sheet, if I'm correct, right, John, I think we talked about, this decreased the main building by 5%.
We restructured, correct, yeah. The consultant, when he put this together and discussions, we had, under the lot development standards, 35% maximum lot coverage.
Right.
But he also included the figure of 35% building coverage. And what we did, and then he did not include any additional coverage for permeable materials. What we've done with this revised page, we left the maximum lot coverage at 35%. We reduced the maximum allowable building coverage to 30%.
Right.
But then we put in as a footnote that an additional 5% lot coverage would be allowed for utilization of permeable surfaces in the side and rear yard only. So this was basically, this was a text change for your presentation tonight, for you to review it if you wanted to go forward. We would then make those revisions and have those ready when we complete the discussions on the UDO.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
We just spent 15 minutes on this, and it seems like it's more confusing than what it is. So I'm really getting tired of talking about this, and I'm going to make a motion to table right now.
Motion on the table, rules. Is there a second? Motion fails. All right. My vote was wrong then because I misunderstood what the intent of Alderman. Yeah, I want to recall, I want to recall the, the roll. Alderman Shawkey's motion to adopt the UDO as is, and to, is that, without this amendment, and to, and to pursue this amendment at a later date. Yes. That was the motion.
We're going to have five test areas, is that? Oh, no, this, that's a separate motion.
It's a totally separate issue. This is just to keep the UDO moving.
UDO. Okay.
That's a second. All right. Let's recall the roll, please. Yes, on the question.
I'm, so the motion on the floor, make sure my vote's going the right way here. The motion on the floor is pass the UDO with this not being in it.
Correct.
Am I correct?
You are correct.
I don't know now.
Mr. Forrest.
He's got his hand up.
Well, I have a question. If you're considering a motion to pass the UDO, that's what I thought the motion was.
It shouldn't technically be to pass the UDO. It's to, it's to eliminate this change from the UDO.
Thank you. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Revised. Does the motioner agree that that's what the motion should sound like? Okay. Seconder? Okay. Anything else on the question? Roll.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. No, we don't have a recommendation to approve. There, we have not been presented with the UDO changes that we talked about at the last committee meeting.
Correct.
So I don't think it's appropriate to make any motion tonight, nor is it even on the agenda to approve the UDO.
Correct.
Although I would like to move forward with it, but I don't think we can tonight. All right. The next item is a discussion on the adoption of a vacant property registration program. I'm sorry. Mr. Forrest.
I just have one question. So at this point, we are staying with our 35% maximum lot coverage, period?
Right.
Yes.
What about the five test? I thought that was going to be a separate motion. Or directed.
Was that, I think that was, let's make it a separate motion. Do we agree to allow staff to, to allow five test cases as they come first?
We need to make the
You have to be fair. I think it's the first, come first served, first five? And then reinvestigate it every 12 months?
At the owner's expense?
Of course, at the owner's expense.
Well, I just don't want
Oh, yeah. No, sorry. Oh, yeah. No, no. These are not city projects. Private properties.
Like, sure.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Let's just take a consensus. Does anybody strongly oppose this? Alderman Roy Wesley?
I'll make that in form of a motion.
Okay, fine. Then I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Are we good, staff?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. All right. Next item, adoption of a vacant property registration program. Mr. Forrest, would you like to take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. I did have this on here for discussion. I'm not coming to you for, to make any decisions on adoption or anything, but in response to the increase in foreclosures and vacant structures, actually throughout the country, communities are beginning to adopt ordinances requiring the registration of vacant properties, and as structures that remain vacant over extended periods of time contribute to the decrease in value of surrounding properties, create property maintenance, tall grass and weed issues, become attractive nuisances for children, and they can be issues for police and fire personnel. One of the biggest obstacles in code enforcement with vacant structures is trying to track down a responsible party, as they're called, who is able to take responsibility for the continued maintenance and upkeep of the foreclosed and vacated properties. Quite a bit of staff time is spent trying to track down and contact an owner and get them to comply with the property maintenance requirements for these types of properties, and in the absence of such a contact, we're forced to use staff or independent contractors to correct the most immediate issues with these properties, and then we have to chase people and try to collect our money or go through the lien process, and it's very time consuming and costly. And in doing some research, right now, Hinsdale, South Elgin, and Evanston are among 35 communities in Illinois that have adopted ordinances requiring the registration of vacant properties within specified periods of time. The name, address, and contact information for the owner and/or an agent, hence the responsible party, for the property are required information that must be provided to the municipality. Typically, a registration fee is also required, and those fees range anywhere from $30 to $500 annually across the country. I've been checking some of those. And even though, you know, again, it's hard to find that responsible party, there is a company out there called Safeguard Properties, and they have what they call the MERS Initiative, and that's Mortgage Electronic Registration System. That's a database that houses information on the mortgages and banks and savings and loan. Those type of companies belong to this. They keep their properties registered with this company, and when we get foreclosures and vacant properties, we are able to go to this website and track down who it is that is responsible for keeping that property maintained. I'm researching this a little bit further. I've sent some communications to Safeguard Industries because initially on their website, they said that municipalities' participation in this site is at no cost to them. They provide it as a service. So I'm waiting to hear back from them what I have to do to sign up for this. But really, I just wanted to bring this to you for some discussion. I do have copies of the ordinances from Elmhurst, I'm sorry, from Evanston, South Elgin, and Hinsdale, and then I also have a letter of opinion from the Hinsdale City Attorney, as Hinsdale is not a home rule community, as to why he felt it was prudent and it was legal for them to adopt such an ordinance. So really, I just wanted to bring this forward to see if this is something the council would want to be interested in, and then I can move forward and have the city attorney review some of these ordinances and get some more information. I didn't just, didn't want to start sending things to the city attorney for a program that nobody would be interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I think this is a good program. I believe, if I am mistaken, I brought this back from one of the conferences that we went to, was it, I believe Hinsdale had it, and I brought that back to Joe Johnson to look into this. So this did come out one of our conferences that we attended. I think it's a great idea. The only thing, John, I would like to see the copied ordinance and how they, they worded, and, and the letter of attorney. And now is, is South Elgin home rule?
I believe they are, and Evanston is. But I did talk to the Community Development Director in Franklin Park today. They also have an ordinance adopted. They are not home rule either.
So I would like to look at those copy. I think it's a good program to move forward. I would direct you, if the council agreed, to direct you to proceed on, try and get that website or whatever, proceed that. But I would like to see the copy ordinance, the way they worded, and, and see the attorney's opinion before I want to move another attorney or draft another one.
Yeah, I agree with you, Alderman Wesley. I think we're looking for a consensus here to direct staff to continue pursuing this, to basically allow, so that we know you're spending your time on this and that we're in favor of the concept. I think that's what you're looking for, right, Mr. Forrest?
Correct.
Thank you. Alderman Police?
Bottom line, people are, if they're leaving their homes, they were foreclosed on or whatever, and we're not getting notified. By having the ordinance, is the bank, let's say it's some bank, and, you know, they got, they went on, on the computer, got some lending company from Nebraska or Wyoming, they're not going to notify us because they foreclosed on somebody's home. And if we put in a fee of $100 or something, I mean, we, what do we use? Ignorance of the law is no defense. Sorry, we're going to charge you $100. I mean, we still have to, when we have to call the county, the county would know who, who holds title, wouldn't they?
Well, they should, but the problem is, once, once a house goes into foreclosure, you've got anywhere from a four to six to eight month, or even a year, if it's a multifamily, where title of the property is just sort of in this never, never land, and nobody wants to claim responsibility to take care of things. And I'm not saying even if we have this adopted that we're going to get 100% compliance. In talking to a couple of the municipalities, some of them have better rates of compliance than others, and what I'd like to find out is what's the key to that? Why is Hinsdale more successful than Franklin Park? Why might Evanston be more successful than South Elgin? And that's some of the information that I'd like to continue to research. Yet again, I think before we go too far, we should get the opinion of the city attorney, whether she thinks, or whether they think we can go forward with this.
Okay. So let's just take a quick poll here. Everybody in favor of staff pursuing this, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. You know what to do, John.
Thank you. I have one other comment.
Yes, sir.
I know things are going a little bit longer, but I have some information that I think you'll all be very interested in hearing. We received a new business license application on Tuesday, and I subsequently called one of the executives from this company. Topgolf USA has decided to locate their international corporate headquarters in Wood Dale, up on Jerry Drive. And I called, talked to Chris Durbin to, you know, welcome him to town and just to get a little bit of information, and basically find out why did he choose Wood Dale for their international corporate headquarters. And we had a great conversation. They had a couple of reasons for coming to Wood Dale. One of them is the obvious thing, matter of location, being close to O'Hare, since they are right, currently they have six Topgolf facilities around the globe. They expect to continue to expand that over the next couple of years. So they will be having a lot of international traffic in and out of the corporate center. Also, of course, for their employees, access to the expressways. The other one that I was glad to hear, the reason was they've had such a positive relationship, not only with the Wood Dale Park District, but with staff from the city of Wood Dale in working with this facility that they have right now up on Thorndale. So they're coming in, they're taking 25,000 square feet in a previously empty building. Another company that we have in town that just moved in, which again is another cutting-edge company, is called Advanced Fuel Systems, and that's a company I think we spoke about briefly. They're involved in the global marketing and sales of compressed natural gas fueling stations. We worked with them. We found some space for them in the industrial park they're in and operating right now. Also, just quickly, since January of 2010, just for your information, we've had 17 new businesses come into town. Most of them are industrial uses, warehouse or office. Only one of them is a retail use, but that's a good sign to see businesses coming back into Wood Dale instead of leaving. And that does not include the Thorntons, which we expect, I mean, the permit's been issued. As you know, they're re-tweaking the design because they want this to be sort of prototype store. And the last thing I'll say is we've issued permits for three new homes in the last few weeks, so.
Very good news. I really appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you. Okay. Items to be considered at future meetings, first is the Lakota Group's Thorndale Corridor Study, and then, of course, the Unified Development Ordinance. Is there requests for anything else? Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'm not going to give up on my lot coverage here.
Okay. No, I, it's worth pursuing, absolutely.
So.
Could not agree with you more that we need to look at it, so.
Right. So I'd like to put that on the, for future meetings.
Absolutely.
Soon.
Anything else? All right. No, then I will like to make a motion to adjourn. So move. All right. That was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries.
All right. I'd like to call the Finance Administration Committee meeting to order. Let the minute take a, sorry. Let the minutes reflect that all members are still present. Or same members are still present, I should say. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes of May 13th, 2010. I do have one change on the motion to pass the 13-cent water increase along with the residents. I did not second that. I believe it was Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Any other changes? Motion to approve the minutes? With the changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is report and recommendation of movies in the park, and I believe Alderman Wesley's going to take this. Are you taking the lead on this? Is that what I'm understanding? Or is somebody on staff? Roy Wesley.
Well, he usually speaks, so. I brought this up because with the economy how it is, more people are going to be staying home and not going on vacation, and I think as part of the city to find things for families to do, especially in their own town, to promote their own town, Wood Dale. I tasked it did this a couple of years ago, and they had a very good turnout. And what I'm looking for is to try one movie and see how it goes, not to exceed $1,000 to come out of tourism fund. And in return, let the Boy Scouts or nonprofit organizations sell popcorn and pop to help them make it a little fundraiser for themselves to, to buy their trailer or whatever their, their goals are. So that's what I'm looking for, not to exceed $1,000. And they, what, what this is, is the company would come out, set up the screen, run the movie, and take it down. So for staff, it's just a phone call, basically, and to pay them, so.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Do we know that it's only $1,000? I've been to their websites, and it says, it said $600, so I'm asking not to exceed $1,000. Have we contacted ITASK on what their price was? I did, I did talk to the city manager, and he did not succeed with talking to Williams over there.
It's been a game of telephone tag.
Okay.
We've, we've tried to get a hold of them. I, I think that the number that Alderman Wesley's got in mind will handle it.
Because I did go ITASK, and, and it is a pretty good-sized turnout.
Yeah, I mean, we've just been, Dave Williams and I have just been back and forth.
Alderman Caddella?
Mr. Manager, please stay there. I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure. We have the $1,000 in tourism without any issues?
That's correct.
Okay.
Got a follow-up?
Yeah. I, I also want to, if, if this is, I like to pick a date early enough because if it is a good turnout and people do like it, I like to put it into more, because I don't know how many nonprofit organizations we have, maybe four or five in the town, but maybe each of them could get a little piece into this later on. But I like to try one at least.
If the council goes along with it, staff will coordinate with Alderman Wesley, and we'll, we'll make it work as soon as we can.
I'm calling myself.
That's it.
Sorry. Little stuff. Roy, I think we talked before the meeting. I asked you what this was all about. You said as far as staff time, basically, staff does not have to be there. These guys come out, set up the equipment, correct?
Correct.
We just got to call them and tell them a date and cut them the check, right?
Yes, but they also have rain dates, too, that they will offer us.
Well, does that sound right to you, or is there going to be staff time, a lot of staff time involved?
We'll make it work.
Okay. I just don't want to invest 40 hours into, because, because we already Because we already...